Open our hearts to the abundance of your grace. We acknowledge that every perfect gift comes from above. We offer gratitude for your care. As we gather in the coming week, knit us together in love. Help us to see each other in a reflection of your son and empower us to share our blessings with the needy, so that we may truly live as your body on earth. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech.
Very good. Approval of the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move at the minute to the regular meeting held on November 4th, 2025. Be approved as printed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call.
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carried. All right, communications. We're going to start with the most exciting piece of communication tonight. Every year we get to recognize the newly crowned Festival of Lights Queen in our court. And this year, we have also the first 2025 Crowned Festival of Lights Little Princess. And so Jennifer Cowan's with us tonight. Jennifer, I want to have you step up and you get to introduce everybody and...
Right. Hello, I'm Jennifer Cowan, the chairperson for the Festival of Lights Queen pageant. This year, we were so excited, we added a little princess pageant. We had a max of fifteen girls. We ended up with fourteen. It was a lot of fun. It was a very, very tough way to find our queen or our little princess. But we would like to introduce this year. I'm not even going to try to say her last name. She can tell you her last name. Her first name is Ziana. Come on up, honey. Why don't you introduce yourself with your last name?
My name's Ziana Nivari-Biol.
There you go.
There you go.
I'm the first Festival of Lights Little Princess. Thank you so much for making me the first Little Princess. First Festival of Lights Little Princess. I'm excited to crown the next princess next year.
Very good. Well, first of all, congratulations to you. You did a great job and we're super proud of you and we look forward to having you around at some of these events for this next year. So congratulations, okay?
And now you can see why she was our little princess. All right. Next, I would like to introduce Salem Tabaki. She is our second runner-up.
Hi, my name is Salem Tabaki. I'm a senior at East Peoria Community High School. I'm in the band program and speech and a lot of the music programs. And I would like to say thank you for this opportunity to represent East Peoria and I hope that I can make you guys proud.
Very good. Well, congratulations.
And next is our first runner-up, Bella Duckworth.
Hi, I'm Bella Duckworth. I'm seventeen years old and a senior at East Peoria Community High School. I'm a part of softball, volleyball, and best buddies in Link Crew. I'm super thankful for this opportunity and I hope to represent East Peoria well.
Very good. Congratulations.
And finally, we have our Festival of Lights Queen, Amira Dvorak.
Hi, my name is Amira Dvorak. I'm a senior at East Peoria Community High School and I'm so beyond grateful for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and I hope I can succeed.
Hey, congratulations. And just so you know, I want you to know your grandparents would be very proud of you, young lady, so.
Oh, yeah.
And we're proud of you. Well, congratulations to all of you and we do seriously look forward to working with all of you. We got the parade coming up Saturday, so I'm sure we're going to see everybody down there and just kick-start a good year. So congratulations to all of you. We appreciate it and we're super proud of all of you, so. Thank you for being here. Yeah, you can leave. You do not have to stay for the boring stuff. Okay. One more item under Communications. I do have a proclamation this evening. Whereas the government of East Peoria, Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas there are thirty-four point seven million small businesses in the United States which account for ninety-nine point seven percent of all U.S. businesses, small businesses are responsible for sixty-one point one percent of the net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-five point nine percent of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas fifty-nine percent of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday. Reporting that that day makes them want to encourage others to shop independently-owned retailers and to shop small businesses all year long. And whereas small business shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small and even when shopping online, most recognize that it's important to shop small businesses, dine in, or order takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café. And whereas consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said that day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas East Peoria, Illinois supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our communities. And now therefore, I, John P. Call, Mayor of the great city of East Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five as Small Business Saturday and urge all residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its sixteenth year in twenty-twenty-five, and shop small throughout the year. So we always love to do this every year. And I will say, we have nine hundred and some businesses here in East Peoria, believe it or not, and a vast majority of them are small businesses. So we appreciate the support our community gives small businesses and encourage everybody to join us out and about November twenty-ninth, not just that day, but every day would be appreciated, so. All right, with that, public comment. Anyone wish to address the council on agenda item? Please step forward. Yeah, I'm seeing no one. Commissioner Hill, turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consisting of items numbered one through four. Item number one, adoption of resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-four, resolution to approve payment of the scheduled bills listed on schedule number thirteen in the amount of two million one hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and eleven and twenty-seven cents. Item number two, adoption of resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-six-seven on its second reading, resolution authorizing the payment of an invoice from Illinois Civic Civil Contractors, Inc. for additional work for the East Washington Street ADA ramps and sidewalks improvement project for Mall Street, yeah, Mall Street and Anna Street and Springfield Road intersections in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Item number three, adoption of resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-six-eight on its second reading, resolution approving paramedic training costs for the city's new firefighters at the Peoria Area EMS Office. Item number four, adoption of ordinance number four-eight-seven-six on its second reading and ordinance amending chapter five of Title XI of the City of East Peoria Code pertaining to parking to include restrictions for the city hall and civic complex parking lot and other related updates, as listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered one through four listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted, and the items numbered two through four having been read once by the title and have been laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you. Motion carried.
I have two second readings tonight. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-seven here to attach and ordinance adopting a tax levy for the twenty-twenty-five tax year for the City of East Peoria Special Service Area twenty-nineteen A, Access Road Six Improvement, having been read once by its title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Well, I went a little more in length last meeting, the first reading, but I'll give you a little bit of what we have here. We have what we call a special service area. And back in twenty-twenty, we went ahead with the creation of this special service area so that we could make improvements to Access Road Six. And in this particular case, the special service area involves assessing the properties along that property, or along that street, benefiting from those improvements for the amounts that we consumed in the improvement. Now, there were two different, there was an initial and then there was a follow-up as far as the money revenue, and I think it totaled, let's see, approved four hundred thousand, subsequently another seventy thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. And so what happens in this case, the assessment was spread over a ten-year period, and in this case, we are on year six of ten. And so that's what we have in front of us tonight.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you. Motion carried.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-eight here to attach and ordinance adopting a tax levy for the twenty-twenty-five tax year for the City of East Peoria Special Service Area twenty-twenty-one A, Valley View Knolls Water System Improvement, having been read once by its title, having been, and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
This is similar in the fact it's a special service area, but the Valley View Knolls Water, I'm going to call them Commission, I don't remember what their official name was, that neighborhood that was on their own well came to the city and desired to be put on city water. And in that process, a special service area twenty-one A was created to cover the cost of adding all those individuals' homes onto the service, onto the city wire. So at the onset, residents were given the opportunity to pay it all upfront, the assessment amount, or have it financed over ten years, or assessed over ten years. And so twenty-one property owners chose to pay it in full, and the other property owners then will be assessed over the next, over the ten years at the beginning, and this is year five of the ten years payments. So every year, as a regulatory requirement, we have to assess those special service area taxes.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you. Motion carried.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-eight-zero here to attach and ordinance authorizing special use for an accessory structure on property located twenty-three-seventy Centennial Drive in the City of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Okay, as this says, the case in this particular, the ask was for another accessory structure on this property. And the reason it went through the ZBA, the petition was by Patty Nyber, the property is, well, you'd have to drive by, it's up on Centennial. I went by there, or actually looked at the aerial and wondered, well, let me back up. Reason it went in front of the zoning board was because the structure was larger and it also exceeded the amount of coverage on the property. So the ZBA voted six to oh to recommend approval. So if you go by, originally, I looked it up on Google Maps and was wondering, yes, this is a property adjacent to, I forgot the street name. Ty, you recall the street name? It's adjacent to, it's a city street. If you don't, it's okay.
I don't offhand.
Okay.
The smaller corner. Vaughn, yes, sorry.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn, yes. So looking at the property, like, wow, they've got a few buildings on there, but the one thing that changed it when I did, I drove by, and the barn that was in the, some of these old pictures is gone, because I was trying to figure out, based on the information you may have seen in the packet, that the house was going to shield part of this new structure, and I was trying to figure out where it was going to go with the various buildings. So to fast forward, the barn, if you had looked at Google Maps or any of those GeoSpace programs, is not there. And so, again, the ZBA has recommended the approval of this considering all things, a couple of things I wanted to mention, that both sides of the properties, both sides of the property are lined with evergreen trees. And again, this is consistent, this property has been there well before many of those other properties in the area, so. So that's what's in front of us tonight. ZBA records six oh for this special use for the accessory structure.
Very good. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you. Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-eight-one here to attach and ordinance authorizing a special use for ground mount solar on property located at five-forty West Camp Street in the City of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mees.
And this is the petition of Lance Frank, Solar Energy Group Hub LLC, and the five-forty West Camp Street is the location of...
Car wash.
And so I've got a question, actually, not really meaning to put Ty on the spot, because I wanted to clarify my understanding. Well, let me give the information from the ZBA. The ZBA voted five one to approve the revised petition, because originally the solar panels were going to be on the front of the building. Now, the question I have, based on the, I believe our discussion, the plan is to move them to the back of the building, because the information we've got in this packet has them, them and quite a few of them, that's my next question, lining the entire property on what would be the east side of the property. Was that the first suggestion?
No, the initial proposal had, these are freestanding arrays, and they had them placed out front.
Okay.
So between the building and the road.
So the proposition now is along the east side of the property, according to the drawing?
This is the rear, so this is behind the building. So opposite of where, if you look at it from the street, this would be behind the building.
It would be on the north side of the building.
Yeah, north side, yeah.
Because that's where, I thought we had that discussion, but then the drawing was really, in my opinion, the panels in that array. What is the number of panels? Because that, the drawing had, let's see, it might have been sixty-four set, sixty-four panels, at least in the drawing, and at least five of them.
There's five structures. And Mr. Frank is here, he can answer the total number of panels, because there's also an on-roof component, too.
Okay, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah.
You're looking for the freestanding?
The ground piece. Because I saw, I thought in the drawing was sixty-four sets and at least five of those, so you were talking three hundred and some panels. Okay. All right. Well, I have a little bit, that was sort of my understanding after I reviewed it a second time, so. That's what we have in front of us. I think, based on, again, I guess my position, I'm going to have a tough time supporting that size of an array, whether it was behind the building or not, or especially if it was in front of the building. But that is a massive amount of solar panels, and I really don't think it's, it goes with the entire area there in our development, so I'm going to let the rest of the council speak to, say their piece.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you. I have a problem as well, because of it being ground-mounted and the, it's always then placed on the ground. If I support it being on the buildings, but, and here's my problem, I appreciate that it was moved to the back of the property, but we're not specifically or exactly bound by the vote we make today in accordance with how we look at other properties, but it's difficult to approve one when they put it on the ground on the property and then say to a different business owner, I don't like where you put it on the ground on your property. So I'm going to remain consistent and I'm going to not support this this evening.
Very good. Can I, Sheriff, if you want to weigh in?
I'm, I'm, I'll suit, I think Commissioner Decker, you said it, I think we had one of these, time goes by fast, but a couple months ago, three months ago, up off of Pleasant Hill, if I remember correctly. So for the same reason, not that I'm a hundred percent opposed to looking at ground mount, I guess, but we've been consistent with saying no, and I think that that's, and if you have something, sir, go ahead.
I do, so.
Step, please step up there.
Hi, my name's Lance Frank. I'm the G C on the project. These are actually twelve feet high, so even though they say ground mount, they're used as carports. That's why they were placed at different areas, because they serve more of a purpose than just being solar. So I don't know if that's the only way they can get listed in, but even though they say ground mount, it's not like they're on the ground. They're supposed to be functional for the operations as well.
How would that, what would that look like, I guess, on the back of the building? What would, how would they function?
So basically, that would look like carports in line, and then they would, they're essentially track the sun, but we would be limited just because of the space down, back there, so we would have to set them where they may not even turn at all. It would just look like a solid carport structure back there.
And would they be used to house cars or?
So originally, they were going to. This would provide shade. I don't know that, what they would do under there, whether they would dry cars or whatnot, but, you know, originally, when we presented it, the reason that they were on different parts is they were going to provide accessory structures that they could use for the car wash. But as we move it back, I just want you to know, like, it's not, it's not on the ground. It's twelve feet high and it looks like a carport. So I don't know if you guys got the photos in there and stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, we presented with the diagrams.
Yeah, I'd like to get a couple things, and I wasn't in support of the church up off Pleasant Hill because it was a residential area. But this is a car wash on Camp Street. There isn't a house within shooting range, and I think that this is what, if you want to control it, own it. And I don't want to take away from anybody's rights just because of my taste sometimes. I guess maybe that would be untrue statement all the time. But I think that this would be a perfect place and a perfect thing for solar to do with what they're doing. And I watched the hearing, and they moved it from the front of the road to the back of the building where they got a lot less electricity and it was out of sight, out of mind. So part of this is on the roof and part of it is on legs which reach up to where a truck or a car could drive underneath of it. So I'm in support of this.
Okay, well, I'm going to be consistent. I will not be supporting this. Mainly, my view lines up with Commissioner Hill in that I look at the diagram and I understand what you're saying about, had they been in the front, I could see where they were going to use them as more of a carport to vacuum cars out, things like that, because they do have shaded areas out front. But based on the sheer size of this and the amount of space that would take up, people can say what they want, but it's not conducive with what we've tried to develop down here, and I won't support it.
Can I ask one more question, Your Honor?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going, is that concrete back there or is that grass back there that they're going to be?
I believe it was a grass berm back there.
So they're going to be sitting on grass, not on concrete?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they would, I think that that, the old trucking company that UPS bought would be their rear neighbor. It used to be called Bruin or U A N Trucking. And then Chris Hare, which is now S C Two, would be their side neighbor, and they didn't complain. And it wouldn't surprise me a bit if either one of those companies kind of done the same thing.
I guess, I was looking at if they're going to be used to actually house cars or used as part of the operation. If they were on concrete, that would, that would work, but grass, they're probably not going to be.
Go ahead.
I tend to agree, and I do understand it, them being on top of the structure, and I would also feel better if they were, if they were out to provide, I guess, shade while somebody was working on their car and be on top of the structure. But, yeah, I'll stick with how I feel about the location as it's set here, but I think I may feel differently if it were brought out front.
Commissioner, they changed the location because of the hearing. They had them up front for the shade, and the hearing made them put it behind the building. So if you want to change it to where they can put it in front of the building, I'm all for that, too.
I like the functional piece. If they're functional, I like that better, because I think that ties in more with what we've done, with what we've said, which is, they're not necessarily ground-mounted. They are, but they're also serving a function for the business, which would be to provide shade. Well, there are vacuums out there on that, correct?
Yes.
Was that the original intent of them?
No, I think one of them was over where the customer pays. One of them was out front where the cars sit when they're drying, and one was on the side on the driveline where they also sit and dry. And then two were in the back originally as well, and those were just going to be for power production. The car wash uses like sixty or seventy houses worth of power, so quite a bit of offset.
So there was a functional piece at first?
Yeah.
To those, okay.
Could I follow up with just a quick question? So if the size is the issue, I definitely understand that. Is there an acceptable amount of panels that you would allow to go back there or?
So part of my, and I'm just going to say the quiet part out loud, with some of these commercial projects, the one thing that nobody talks about is the decommissioning component. I get hung up on that. Nobody wants to talk about that. What does that do twenty, thirty years from now? Let's say this business is sold and the next person comes in, and that's the challenge I have. I, you know, I'm looking at this and I got to tell you, we're building a twenty-two-million-dollar police station, literally two doors down from this. That thing is going to be probably the proudest building this city's ever built, and it's by design. We put a lot of effort and time into that design, and the last thing I want to do is see, I would not, no matter the purpose, I absolutely would not support it out front. I'll tell you that. You know, and part of what we're trying to track to develop out, the remaining areas down here, I said it once and I'll say it again, this is not conducive with what we hope to see in our, in our plans, so. I don't, it wouldn't change my mind. I'm just looking at the sheer size based on the diagram, and Commissioner Hill brought that point up about some concerns about the size of the panels. I don't know. I don't, I can't speak to the technology or...
I'd be willing to reduce it. You know, those things are modular, so you can reduce the size of them based on the need. Just look, just really looking for a way for the project to happen, but if it can, it can't, right? So.
Yeah, well, I'll leave it in the hands of the ones that are kind of on the fence.
I'm going to vote no on the way it is tonight. If it were a functional unit, I would not support it tonight, because I would want to see what that would look like and what that would entail. I think he has a good point. We did discuss that when it was the church property, what happens to it if something what happens to it if, if something happens to the church? And they were very upfront, they said, "Well, the, the property is bound, uh, to those solar panels." So, that would be something the next owner would have to accept and have part of their, their plan. Um, as far as, I'm not gonna point it out specifically, but I know there's a commercial property, uh, somewhere in Peoria that has the, the ground mounted, and I, I think knowing some neighbors that live in that area, some of the problems that it causes, some of the concerns I have with this. So, that's, uh, my issue with it being in back, as far as if it were functional and part of a, an overhang, uh, for people as they clean their cars, something I would think about, would not support it tonight.
I think. I've got another question. You're, the petitioner name, you, you're not the owner of the car wash?
Correct.
Okay, so you're, again, our past, uh, solar project, you're entering into an agreement where they're gonna buy the power that's generated from these panels from you?
No, they, they own the system, I, I'm the licensed D G installer and also the general contractor.
Okay, so they will own this?
They own the system outright, there's no payment.
Because, again, going back to the sheer size and the functional, the functional, you know, it would, it would depend on, again, how it looked, like, if, if you thought about this property, and, uh, I've washed my car there, but if you had sun, you know, sun protection today, that then you were putting, uh, solar panels on, and it was like Commissioner Mingus said, they had a functional purpose, but there's none out there today. But, uh, the sheer, like I said, I, I was looking at this and started counting the squares up, and, and, and I know this operation is gonna need a lot of power, so cutting the, cutting your panels down, I, I don't know if there's a good answer that's gonna make it feasible for you or, or for them on the generation of power. Uh, but I, I think about the, the commercial properties behind them, seeing that wall, I think, uh, saw in the spec, somewhere that it could be high, as high as twenty feet, at, you know, whatever angle it was tilting to. So, you, you know, you got two-story structure that everybody in behind them, and again, they're a trucking firm, and it was UPS back there, that they're staring into this for, forever. So, part of me, uh, I'm all for solar, but in, in this particular, uh, I don't say inside city set, settings, uh, it's gonna be different, or difficult, in my opinion, to make it workable.
Well, the, I don't, I, I, guys, I don't think there's a tomorrow, uh, for this gentleman because of the sunset, of the rebates and stuff like that, that's making this go, because I think everything changes at the end of the year, beginning of next year at some point. So, it, it's either a go now, and, and let me, let me say this, I know there's government tax breaks and stuff on this, but this isn't a, a give-me thing, this, this, this car wash is paying for this stuff, and, and I don't care if they get half their energy or all their energy, that's between that gentleman up there and the car wash, whether they cut the panels back a little bit and lower this a little bit, I, 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 I believe that they have the right to decide that. Now, I don't mind looking at a solar panel when I'm driving past it, but, uh, you know, the police department building is, is, you know, we picked that place down on Camp Street, and there isn't a building down on Camp Street that is gonna shine, except for the police department. So, that's not that they're bad and we're good, it's just that that's the location we picked.
Can I ask you, Commissioner, on the, the ground mount that you voted, I believe you voted no, was that?
Residential.
Okay, just, just wanna play a?
All right, any other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
No.
Hill?
No.
Mingus?
No.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor call?
No.
I have four no's and one I, Your Honor.
Okay, motion denied.
Okay. Next case, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-two, resolution approving reimbursement of engineering fees for Levy Park project in the Civic Plaza for OZLAD grant funding be approved. Mister Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-two be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Okay, let me get my notes here, so, we've got approximately seventy-four thousand of the eighty-four thousand approved in the project budget, this is for, again, work that Faragam has already, uh, completed, and so, this is reimbursable from the OZLAD, uh, OZLAD, uh, community foundation, or, yeah, grant. So, we have that in front of you to pay the seventy-four and the remaining for, I think there was an audit that comes in behind this, uh, project at the end to close it out.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting out, Your Honor?
Thank you, motion carried.
That completes it for me tonight.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Decker?
I have one item, Mayor, resolution two-five-two-six-dash-zero-six-nine, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-six-nine, resolution authorizing the city of East Peoria to enter into an agreement with I dot for modernization of traffic signals and resurfacing of the Route Twenty-Four intersection with Grange Road and related funding appropriation be approved. Mister Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-six-nine be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus?
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. This is a, a project that I dot is taking on, the resurfacing of Grange Road, and, I'm sorry, yes, the intersection.
Of US Twenty-Four, yeah.
Right, and at that intersection, Grange to Twenty-Four, uh, this is our portion of the signals, and I passed it along before writing down the amount, would you mind?
Yeah, our, our share is, uh, twenty-six thousand, let's see, it's right in here somewhere.
Two sixty.
Twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Yes. Uh, and they are spending quite a bit of money on their project, uh, I think over half a million, if not mistaken.
Yeah, it's a five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar project. So, this includes our, our share of modern, modernizing the traffic signals at that intersection. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting out, Your Honor?
Thank you, motion carried.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Sutherland?
I have one thing tonight, Your Honor. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-one, resolution accepting and approving proposals from Armature Motor and Pump Company, Kahoy Well and Pump Service, and Foremost Industrial Technologies for the Oakwood Treatment Plant High Service Pump and Motor Replacement Project be approved. Mister Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-one be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
You don't see this often, I, I have a, this proposal here has three subcontractors working on the same project, which is kinda cool, um, and, um, Kahoy, uh, portion is thirty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, Foremost, um, for the, uh, reactor line is six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, and Armature is ten-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars for their, uh, portion of the project. And this is, this is one of our main pumps, so, wells, we need to get her up and going right.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting out, Your Honor?
Thank you, motion carried.
That's it tonight for me.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Mingus?
Two items tonight, Your Honor. First item, resolution two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-three, whereas the Open Meetings Act Five, I L C S, one-twenty slash one, um, E T S E Q, requires that the city, requires the city to get public notice of its scheduled, uh, regular meetings at the beginning of the calendar or fiscal year, and whereas the city shall post said public notice at City Hall and said copies in the manner provided by law, and whereas the city desire, desires to approve of such notice in the form attached hereto and incorporated herein as attached, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, adopts hereby the public notice of its regular meetings in the form attached. Section two, the city clerk of the city of East Peoria has directed to post a copy of the public notice contained in this resolution in the City Hall, and to supply copies of this notice in the manner provided by law. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval in the manner provided by law. Mister Mayor, I move you that resolution number two-five-two-six-dash-zero-seven-three be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, this is exactly, um, as it says it is, this is our, um, posting of our meetings, I took a look at it before this meeting, it looks like everything pretty much stayed the same.
Except for two dates.
As it's been, except for two dates, so?
There's a bill sitting on the governor's, uh, desk that he has yet to sign into law, but, um, recent legislation, um, makes Election Day, makes it prohibits municipal governments, uh, from hosting public meetings on Election Days, so that would affect two dates next year, which, instead of, uh, falling on Tuesdays, would fall on Mondays.
Okay.
So, we've got that spelled out in our, on our calendar, so?
Perfect.
Interesting. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting out, Your Honor?
Thank you, motion carried.
Not that it matters, Your Honor, but I always thought it was kinda cool when we had a meeting on Election Day, but?
So did I, but, you know, that's how the state works.
Like wearing the sticker?
Yeah, I thought that that was kinda neat, anyway, guess he didn't check with us. Ordinance number four-eight-seven-nine.
Well, he hasn't signed it yet, just so you know.
Maybe?
I'm sure he will, yeah, it passed in the veto session.
Second item, Your Honor, ordinance number four-eight-seven-nine, Mister Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-nine here to attach an ordinance amending Title Three, Chapter Three of the East Peoria City Code to change the number of Class D liquor licenses authorized to be issued within the corporate limits of the city, be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on table for no less than one week for public inspection.
I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
We do this from time to time, although we haven't done it for, for kinda quite some time that I can remember, but this is just changing the, the number of liquor licenses we have, which changes, um, as businesses come and go, and, um, as those licenses need to be updated.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
Ball present, voting out, Your Honor?
Thank you, motion carried.
That's all I have now, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Public comment, anyone wish to address the council, please step forward.
Is our per, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Was our permit approved then?
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, it was, well, I think it has to go through a second reading.
First reading, yeah.
But usually how that works, it gets put on the consent agenda, since it was unanimous, uh, it won't be on the regular agenda, which means we just have to approve it a second time, which will be at the next meeting.
Yeah, first one in December.
Two weeks?
Yes.
What you told me?
Well, the second?
We can't start anything. No foundation work, nothing?
You shouldn't, you shouldn't step up and ask that question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll forget you asked that.
But I was just, you know, standing on, so?
Believe me, I think each one of us can speak for ourself, we've supported it tonight, it's gonna pass on its second reading unanimously, there's no issues.
Okay, thank you, thank you, so, tell the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, see you in two weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And guys, I, I won't speak for the re, we're, you guys don't need to feel obligated to come in two weeks, we're, we're gonna support it, so, we appreciate you coming, but I, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but?
Yeah, if that would change, we'll reach out to you.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we get the permit? Is it emailed to us?
Ty?
What permit?
All right, thank you. You're welcome to come in two weeks.
Yeah.
You know?
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, my name's Lisa McMahon, and I have a home here in East Peoria. My car was hit with a backhoe by a city worker.
Mm-hmm.
What has followed has not been simple, it's been very difficult. The city's insurance has failed to, failed the people it's supposed to serve. I was given a rental, then I was told to return it. I am still paying for a car, I can't drive, I've already made two payments. Four days after the, the incident, Derek from the city's insurance had to say to me, he still had to establish who was at fault. I find that insulting and dismissive. I've spent hours on calls and emails, I continue to deal with the city's insurance. My car was my independence, it is how I operate my everyday life, my work, my responsibilities. Losing it has dr, disrupted everything. All of this happened just one week after my father passed away at our home. I was already grieving, and now I'm left without support, without transportation, and still paying for a car that the city has destroyed. The insurance co, settlement, although not here yet, will not cover the full price I paid for the car, including taxes, registration tax, and the extras I added. New tires, a stereo system, and it does not compensate me for all the time spent dealing with this. This was not my fault, I didn't want this, I did not cause this. I am asking the city to compensate me fully for the settlement difference, my tires, stereo, and all the hours of my time, my stress, and my loss of independence, as well as to take on the headache of handling all the details. I also ask the city to allow me assistance from an office employee who can assist me on how to get this matter resolved, as well as to submit a claim to East Peoria. So, I am not left to navigate this alone. Finally, I would like to thank the mayor for getting the street sweeper out to my home. I appreciate that effort.
So, ma'am, I'm gonna tell you right now on record, it is not your fault, it was absolutely a backhoe, owned and operated by the city, and the gentleman that will help navigate through this claim will be back from vacation tomorrow, and it was already on my radar to put him in touch with you, so, we'll, we'll get someone to guide you through this process, and I don't know why the insurance company would've told you they're still investigating, there's no, I'm just going on record, I'm gonna tell you right now, unequivocally, our problem. So, now, I can't speak to the insurance process and all that, but, um, Jeff will be back tomorrow, I'll put Jeff in touch with you, and we'll help navigate you through the claim, so?
Thank you very much.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Take care. All right. Comments from the council?
Mayor, I, um, sorry, Commissioner Decker. No, that's good. I do feel bad about that, I heard about it, and it shouldn't have happened, it did, and unfortunately, things do happen, especially, brings me to my topic, um, snow removal. We, um, it's one of those things where, when our plow trucks are clearing snow, uh, unfortunately, things like that sometimes do occur, um, but, the way to do that, I just wanted, I talked about it last council meeting, I wanna say it again tonight, that if it is forecasted to snow two inches or more, please move your vehicles off the street if at all possible. I know there are some streets in our community that does not, the, the houses don't have driveways, so, it makes that decision a little tougher, uh, but, um, if at all possible, I most can, um, to, it is a, a law in our, our community, if it's going to snow more than two inches, for you to move your vehicle off. Um, also, as snow plows are driving down the road, uh, especially the, you know the difference between heavy snow versus light, uh, that snow can be thrown and it can do damage. Uh, if that occurs, you know, reach out to us. It's a, it's not something that's planned and we don't, you know, obviously we don't want that to happen, but, um, there are things that happen sometimes. So if it does, please get ahold of us and we'll do what we can to fix it. That's it, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Well, I've only got a couple of, uh, I'll say I've got prayers and wishes for, recent news has, uh, brought that there's fifteen hundred different people throughout the state. That may not seem like a lot, but those fifteen hundred people are being laid off. Uh, most of them are as a result of the companies leaving Illinois. And so, you know, again, if you, if you've ever been laid off and you have that, uh, your, your main stream of income pulled out from, from under you and especially at this time of year, Thanksgiving, Christmas, it's no good, so. Prayers to those individuals and there's many, several different firms, uh, that are being affected by those layoffs as a result of termination of, of the companies in Illinois. After that, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving. Uh, we will be meeting and hope to see everybody at the Festival of Lights Parade on Saturday.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sutherland?
I really don't have a lot tonight other than, um, happy Thanksgiving and, um, it's supposed to be a halfway decent Saturday for the festival.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Mingus.
Yeah, just other than happy Thanksgiving, one thing, um, and he doesn't know I'm going to thank him publicly, but I, I want to thank the mayor publicly. He, uh, my school was in session for the first time on Veterans Day. Uh, we've been out, but as is a common trend with schools, we were in and we wanted to do something to recognize veterans. Um, I contacted the mayor to see if he would be a guest speaker at our, at our school. And he did and he did a great job. So I just want, a lot of times people do things and I know he didn't do it for, uh, any public recognition at all, but, um, I think when someone does something good for the community, whether it's this community or another community, they should be publicly recognized, so thank you, mayor. I really, I really appreciate that.
Well, thank, thank you for the invite and it was a honor and a privilege and it's always fun to get in front of students and talk about things like that, history and, uh, what are military means. But it was, I just want you to know how much I appreciated the opportunity and, uh, you guys did a great job. And I could tell how much it meant to the veterans that were present. They got to eat breakfast, uh, with, uh, the students, whether it was relation or friends or neighbors, whatever the case may be. So, uh, very well done. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of it. Uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, to you and your families. And this Saturday, Forty-first Annual Festival Lights Parade. So the weather is supposed to be decent. It is Illinois though, so that's subject to change in five minutes. Um, but anyway, we hope for a good turnout. I think, uh, the streets will be shut down by six fifteen at the latest, uh, for six thirty kickoff time, so.
What's the reason we moved it?
Uh, television.
Okay.
So it's televised now, so, yeah, you know?
I knew there was a good reason.
Yeah, well, uh, corporate America, uh, they're not going to allow the East Peoria Festival Lights Parade to, to take place of sports, so I'm pretty sure that has a lot to do with it. But anyway, yeah, now that we televise that, um, so. Anyway, with that, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday evening, December second, twenty twenty-five, at six P M.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.